I always worry, I don't know what I did with my own minutes. Good afternoon, I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 24 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And first, if you are carrying pagers, cellphones, or other devices, if you would silence or turn those off at this time, we would appreciate that. If you are not the applicant and you have come to address us on a case today, and you wish to speak to us, these sign up sheets are available on the table outside the chambers. If you complete one and give it to our staff, we would be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And with that, we'll go to approval of the minutes of the January 10 meeting, and that will take, well, actually, we can't vote on it now, Nick is not here, we don't have a quorum for that meeting, so we'll put that off until later. In that case, we'll go to continuance requests.
We have eight uncontested requests for continuance, items 20 through 27. Item 20 is PC 10324, item 21, C 6405, item 22, C 6422, item 23, PUD 1480, item 24, C 6418, item 25, ABC 776, item 26, C 6423, these are all to be continued until February the 14th, and then item 27, which is ABC 773, will be continued until February the 28th.
Did anyone come here today to talk to us about any of the items on our agenda, items 20 through 27? We've approved the uncontested continuances.
Second.
We have a motion and second to, sir? Okay. We have a motion and a second to continue items 20 through 27, cast your votes, and those are approved.
There are three new requests for continuance, item 9 is C 6428, request to continue until February the 28th. Item 16 is SP 453, to continue until February the 14th, and item 19, PUD 1481, also to February the 14th.
Same question, again, with respect to items 9, 16, or 19 on our agenda, did anyone come to talk to us about those today? Move the new requests? Okay, we have a motion to continue items 9, 16, and 19 as read, cast your votes, and those are approved. Are there any additional requests from the public today for continuances?
We have four items on the consent docket today, I believe we will hear item 4 separately, but item 1 is C 6425, item 2, CE 845, item 3, C 6427, item 4 is C 6430.
Anyone come to address us on items 1 through 3 today? We've approved the items on the consent docket. Gave a motion and second to approve items 1 through 3, cast your votes, and those are approved.
Item 4 is C 6430, this is a final plat of Chapel Creek, Section 7, in Ward 8.
Good afternoon. I asked to pull this, and it's not because I'm opposed to the approving it, I'd just like to know how the 15-foot setback is working in the neighborhood, and if you have experience with sidewalks functioning smoothly, being blocked by parked cars, or how's, you've got enough experience in this area to tell us how that's working?
That's right. And I also have Nolan Cole, the applicant, with me today, and, you know, in regards to your question, obviously, we've got 15-foot front setbacks that was established in the PUD in the previous sections, we have 265 houses that are actually out there today, and the sidewalk's still built, same location, seven foot back of the curb, one foot inside of the rideaway line, and on several of the houses, I think that are utilizing the 15-foot, there's still, a lot of those are utilizing a side load garage, but there's still some, I think, that are utilizing 15 feet, but as of right now, no complaints, and everything seems to be functioning and working fine.
Okay, thanks. Take a motion to approve item 4. We have a motion and second to approve item 4, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
On items requiring separate vote, the first item is item 5, this is C 6416, this is a final plat of Settlers Ridge, Section 6, in Ward 3.
Sorry. Kendall Dillon with Craft and Toll, representing the applicant, and we are in agreement with all of staff's TEs, if you'll notice, I believe, sorry. I've misplaced my staff report, but I believe it's TE number 3, where we are requesting a variance, and if you'll notice, we are, I believe it's Centennial Farm Way. We currently have 24 lots in this section, but if you look at it, we are in excess of the 30 lots from, with one access point, so we are proposing that Centennial Farm Road be looped through with an emergency access to Northwest Fourth Street, and we have visited the Fire Marshal's Office, and I think they're all right with that, so we'd ask for your approval.
Is that okay with the Fire Department?
Yes, we've visited with Mike Wilson, and they're fine with us putting in that temporary emergency access, and obviously, again, it's temporary, so it's something that it will loop, and we'll meet the code on the access.
Okay, no one has signed up, and we do have a variance to TE 3. Move for approval of variance TE 3. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the, Janice?
Do we need to, as the staff report suggests, condition it, the variance? I mean, they've said they're going to do it, do we need to condition the variance?
That's, that's in the variance, I mean, I think it's provided in that language.
You think it is, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance to TE 3, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
And move for approval of the application. Motion and second to approve item 5, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 6 is C 6417, is a final plat of the Grove South, Phase 4, in Ward 8.
Good afternoon, Matt Austin with Caliber Development, speaking with you today because David Box, who normally handles the stuff for us, is out of town, so this final plat comports with the preliminary plat, we're, have no issues with any of these staff recommendations or TEs, the one variance we required, much like the last one, deals with emergency access, our engineer Barry Lodge has met with Mike Wilson, they've come to an agreement on an emergency access, and I just asked for your recommendation.
And Janice, the language in the variance is the same. No one has signed up? I'll move the variance. We have a motion and second to approve the variance to TE 3, cast your votes, that's approved.
And I'll move the application.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 6, cast your votes. You're approved, thank you.
Item 7 is C 6419, this is the final plat of Bentwood Creek, Section 3, in Ward 3.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Consulting, on behalf of the applicant, we are requesting, we agree to all TEs except, we're asking for a variance on the street stub to the east, which is item 3, the, in the original, there's a different owner than the original plating, they're planning on doing, everything to the east is all commercial, and would like to avoid that connection to the commercial, it's also been difficult to get access on State Highway 152 there, so we're just asking for that street stub not to be required.
Okay, Commissioners, no one has signed up? I'll move for approval of the variance. Gave a motion and second to approve the variance to TE 3, cast your votes, and that's approved.
And I'll move the application.
And a motion and a second to approve item 7, cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you.
Item 8 is PC 10334, an application by Standard Testing and Engineering to rezone 3400 North Lincoln Boulevard from R1 to O2 General Office District, in Ward 7.
Thank you, Standard Testing's been at this site for 34 years.
Your name and address for the record, please? Your name and address for the record?
I'm Thomas Kelly, I'm president and owner of Standard Testing.
Thank you.
Standard Testing's been at this present location 34 years, we have grown, and as we've grown, we have run short of parking space, as the houses and lots behind us have become available, we've bought the six lots and houses behind us, and we would like to change the zoning to O2 and use this for parking for our office and laboratory space.
No one signed up, Commissioners? Would O1 do this, or does it need to be O2? Russell?
Your existing site, I'm sorry, your existing site is O2, I don't know if I mentioned it.
It needs to be O2 for the parking.
Okay, thank you, that's what I wanted to know. No one has signed up, Commissioners?
I'll move for approval of the application.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item 8, cast your votes, you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 9 has been continued until February the 28th, item 10 is C 6429, this is revised final plat of Stone Ridge Farm, Section 4, in Ward 8.
Good afternoon, Kendall Dillon with Craft and Toll, representing the applicant, this is our third final plat, we have 37 lots, 8.67 acres, we're in agreement with all TEs, and would ask for your approval.
Again, Commissioners, no one's signed up.
Kendall, what's the significance of the letter that was handed out to us right before the meeting from the Hickman Law Group?
From what?
The Hickman Law Group.
I didn't get a copy of the letter.
Relating to what was the declarations filed in Norman, I have no idea, but does this have any effect on the application, is it of any relevance, I think, Susan, that's my question to you.
We don't deal with covenants and restrictions, which is what this is, it looks like.
It's, you know, it's about the size of the houses, and I, as long as it's R1, it seemed to me that that's not our fight, right?
We're in compliance with the zoning, and I'm not, I haven't even seen the letter.
I guess, though, to put that question a slightly different way, after looking at the letter, my question was, what is the nature of the revisions to the plat, exactly?
To this plat?
Uh huh.
I don't, there are no revisions to this plat, in regards to the revised preliminary plat that we've approved.
Okay, it's, it's on the agenda as a revised final plat, it's that revised part is not significant of anything?
Right, no, and staff can kind of clear this up, but I think what it refers to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we submitted several years ago, a final plat that was called Section 3, and never built it, then we did a Section 4, and never built it, and then I think we continued to go until we got on up, and then we defaulted back with the last one to Section 3, but we did at one point along the way, because of some Corps of Engineers issues, revise the preliminary plat, but in regards to this final plat, this is the first time that we've submitted it, so.
Okay.
So there's no revisions.
We don't have any ability to enforce the covenants or the HOA agreement, so if the neighbors want to hire, this law firm, we could deal with that.
No, my whole point was not wanting to get in the big middle of that, so.
Again, no one has signed up, Commissioners, move item 10? We have a motion and second to approve item 10, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11 is PV 086, this is an application by the Shaz Investment Group, vacate a note on the plat of Deer Springs, Section 1, and this relates to a requirement for internal sprinkling on all the residential structures in Ward 1.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chris Anderson with SMC Engineering, representing developers, have read the staff report and the TEs and agree with them, I would like to maybe get a clarification on TE number 2, where it talks about hard surface drive, and make sure that that includes the Fire Department-approved standard of the 6-inch rock over compacted subgrade, which is what I talked to the Fire Marshal about.
That's adequate, as long as it meets the Fire Marshal's approval for a surface, we're fine with that.
I think it's a shame to have to give up the sprinklers in those houses, because I think that's the best firefighting tool people have.
How many houses are built in that subdivision?
If you can pull up the picture, and I think that was part of the issue with that, is at the same time that that project went in, another one went into the south, and the one to the south is sold out, and been expanded several times, and this particular one, I want to say there's maybe 10 houses in there, at the most, just not selling with that requirement.
Say, again, say why that, we're okay in this? I don't understand, I mean, we've been trying to get houses sprinkled, now we're taking it away, what, what, I don't understand.
Sprinkler requirement was put in place because of the one access point to this number of lots, they're coming back now with, and asking for the sprinklers to be taken away, in lieu of putting in two emergency access points, to be able for the Fire Marshal, Fire Department to get in and out of the subdivision.
So if you've got enough emergency accesses, you don't need sprinkling?
Correct.
No one has signed up, Commissioners, that's my editorial comment.
Yes, to put that question slightly differently, the only reason, JJ, that there was this requirement is because it was limited to one access point, is that what you're saying?
Sorry, question?
Is the only reason that the sprinkling was required initially was because there was only a single ingress and egress, that was the only reason?
There was one, yes, there's one drive into the, one access point into the addition.
They've got all the water they need, and all the water pressure they need, and all that, it's not a question of that?
No, there's city water to this subdivision.
As much as the Fire Department has advocated us trying to get everything sprinkled.
I hate to give it up, I mean, I get that, but we have somebody here, maybe he'd like to tell us something.
I was just getting ready to say, I met with Mike Wilson, there he is.
Good afternoon, my name is Mike Wilson with Fire Marshal's Office, we agree, we hate to give up the fire suppression, I mean, honestly, it is a very good fire safety feature for these homes, we have understood that they have had problems, and a number of developers have had problems selling lots that require fire suppression, ultimately, someday that may become a requirement for new homes, but it isn't right now, and as long as the developer is willing to comply with the access issues and water issues that there are, we would not have any objection to removing the requirement, we would prefer that it be there, but we understand the issues they have with selling these homes that are required fire suppression. So, as long as they are willing to comply with the requirements of the subdivision regulations for, for access and water, we are willing to let them remove the requirement.
Just for my own edification, what is the problem with the fire suppression? Why wouldn't somebody want that?
I think it all comes down to the cost of the home, and I think that's what you've seen writ out large in front of us here, is you had two similar subdivisions that have gone in out there, one to the south, where the homes did not have fire suppression, has sold out, and is expanding, and this one, which was approved basically at the same time, they can't sell houses in there, matter of fact, I'm not the original engineer, and the developer I'm representing is not the original developer, the original developer sold to the developer I represent, because he hasn't been able to sell houses there.
And the project to the south is not operated by the same developer you're representing today?
Parts of it are, not all of it.
Do you have any idea what the cost difference is on a per-square-foot basis, or whatever?
Well, I think, if I'm not mistaken, if you remember the subdivision at Choctaw Road and 59th Street, just on that northeast corner, it seems to me that they said it was like $3,500 a house with a well, and it's more expensive with a well than it is with city water, it's my understanding, anyway, and I'm just trying to pull figures from my head.
That is our understanding.
They have not, I mean, they have sold the firehouses in that subdivision, I've watched it pretty close, so I'm a little skeptical of removing that.
Me too, and I think the numbers that I've seen, after we've went through committee meetings, what, several years ago, on this subject with the Fire Department, and you guys were just cheerleaders for sprinklers, I mean.
Yes, and we still are.
Yeah, well, I hope so, so am I, but I think the cost really is like a buck and a half a foot, I mean, that's really what, so your number of 3,500 would be about right for a regular, you know, normal, a house.
Yeah, and those houses in that subdivision, I think, are somewhere between 2,000 and 2,500 square feet, some.
That's, that's the price, you know, so I don't, I like sprinklers.
And I understand, and I would just point out that if this was a new application, and I had come in with this configuration, with the access, emergency access shown we're proposing, you would not be asking me for the sprinklers, we would need all the, we would not be required to put those in, this particular developer that has gone in and bought these lots, for whatever reason, was not aware of the requirement until he started to build the homes, and he's stuck with that now, so.
We have had, a number of issues dealt with this, and I think the money issues come up often, and I think we've dealt with that fairly well, with the options that they have, and the cost of the fire suppression becoming more reasonable, our problem seems to be more now with the consumer, and them understanding that, what this sprinkler system is, what it's for, what it does, I mean, obviously, it's a lot more effective on a fire than if we come in with a fire hose and start spraying, there's going to be a lot of water damage when you look at that, the sprinkler heads don't put out near as much water.
They only fire, or set off where the fire is, as opposed to soaking the entire house.
True, only, you know, it's not like you see in the movies, they don't all go off, only the head goes off that is activated by the fire, if the fire were to spread and be big enough, you might have more than one head go off, but what we've seen is typically just a single head going off, but we have a lot, you know, with the earthquakes we've had recently, we've, we just had a lot of consumers that are much more worried about having a sprinkler system, and we try to explain to them that it's really no worse than any other plumbing that you have in your house, I mean, on a 13D system like these houses have, most of the time, it is runoff, your domestic plumbing, they can run their own supply in, they do that sometimes also, but, you know, if you have an earthquake, if you have shifting, you'll have the same problem with a plumbing pipe that you'll have with the fire suppression pipe, and you're not seeing.
And you get a homeowner's insurance credit typically for having a fire suppression.
Typically, you know, it depends on companies you go with, but typically, your, your insurance rates will go down, and we've seen them pay for themselves, even, you know, 10 years, that the sprinkler system can pay for itself and not having even done anything, just in the savings you get on insurance, but it is a problem that we have convincing the consumers that this is what they need to have, or they ought to have, and, and the only reason we're not objecting to the variance request is because they are willing to provide the access that is required by the subdivision regulations, we would prefer, honestly, that every subdivision be sprinkled, it's safer for the occupants of the dwellings, but we understand that there's a limit to that, and we're willing to work with the developers to hopefully accomplish that at some point.
Let me ask you another question, I'm trying to understand.
Yes.
The, the north part of the, of the subdivision, looks like it's got quite a few more lots in it than the south side, why is it okay on the north side not to have an emergency access, and it is okay for the south side to have emergency access?
Well, the ultimate answer is, the answer really is, it's not, and that's why they have done what they have proposed, and, and we offered, either way they could go, but both sides are going to get an emergency access, so we won't have 30 lots, now, the south side is not going to go out to Piedmont Road, the way the north side is, it's going to come up to 138th, but we'll have two ways into the area south of 138th, and we'll have two ways into the area north of 138th, and we will have two ways into the whole subdivision off of Piedmont. So, so they took care of that situation, I'm not saying it's the best, I mean, obviously, we'd love everybody to have a.
Where's the Fire Department, how far is it from this subdivision?
Oh, I, I'd have to check on the nearest station.
Do you know about?
Honestly, I don't.
Microphone.
Yes, ma'am, I say it's not very far at all, it is, it is on Mustang Road, just south Northwest Expressway.
Now, I'm, I'm, I don't want to take, we've taken several steps forward, and I don't think we want to take, I don't think we want to start stepping back, and I, you know, I can't vote for not, for taking a sprinkler system away, I just can't do it.
Commissioner, do you think it's fair for the subdivision to the south not to have this thing saddled on them, and this one too, I mean, it's creating a problem between the two areas there, and like I said, the aerial's not up there, but if you could look at it, I mean, it's, it's very obvious that the houses just are not selling in that subdivision, and that's the only, only reason we have.
Did you say it's the same developer and same builders?
A portion of it is, not all of it.
I think it's awfully hard to, to know whether we're comparing apples and apples here, that lots do not look like they are the same size, the configurations don't look like they're the same size, from what little I can tell from these aerial photographs, it's hard to say whether the homes are the same size, I mean, if you want to take a continuance and try to come back and convince us, I wouldn't be necessarily opposed to that, but I, I'm not inclined to vote for this.
Chris, I'll just tell you that I'm going to side with you on this, first of all, we have the Fire Department telling us that they're okay with this, although I disagree with their stance on fire suppression inside residential structures, I'm going to agree with them on this particular case, because this is a consumer-driven request, this is not the developer.
Correct.
The consumer drives this request, basically saying, I'm not buying your product, because I can go right next door and spend $3,500 less, I'm using figures that were quoted up here, not mine, okay, I disagree with the fact that there's a, there's no difference in plumbing and a fire suppression, because they are located in two different parts of the house, one under the slab, one in the attic, it's not the same, I'm not going to debate that, however, I do agree with you on this, this is a consumer-driven request, I don't, I'm going to side with, on this one, which is unusual, with the Fire Department saying, you're doing what they've asked, they said it's okay.
And there again, if this was a new request, you could not require them to put in the fire sprinklers, because we've met all the requirements of the city code.
I don't know that a continuance is going to do you any good, but I'll just tell you this, I mean, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to move for approval.
Excuse me, we have a motion and a second for approval of item 11, ready to vote? Cast your votes.
Denied.
Five to two.
Thank you.
Do what? Oh, okay, that motion failed, so Susan says we need to make a motion to. That motion failed, so Susan says we need to make a motion to deny. Move to deny the application. Second, okay, a motion, a yes is to deny the application. Same five votes, five to two.
Item 12 is V75803. It's an application by Vintage Custom Homes to, we're requesting a variance to section 4.6 of the subdivision regs regarding issuance of a certificate of occupancy on property at 7101 Southwest 105th Street in the Rio de Bella addition, section two.
And this is the same situation we've had a number of times before. Susan tells me that a contractor for the title company is supposedly going to be pulling a permit tomorrow, we're told.
We believe that they will be pulling it today or tomorrow, is what we've been told, and if they do not by the end of the month, we will file something in district court to, I guess, find them in contempt.
Is it fair to say that we're going to continue to see these should that application not be, the permit not be pulled?
We could see some more. I don't know how many building permits have been issued out there.
I'm going to move approval. You know my stance on this, is that I don't feel like we should hold these builders that had nothing to do with this hostage because somebody reneged on their contract. I'm going to move for approval.
We have a motion in a second to approve item 12. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 13 is C6421. This is a preliminary plot of Ledge Stone in Ward Three.
Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Consulting, on behalf of the applicant. We have reviewed the TEs and are requesting a variance to three. The staff report states that the block length is exceeds by 300 on the north and 100 on the south of the northmost east-west street. We agree with the 100 feet, and the north one appears to us to be about 200 feet. We're minimally over that 1,500 feet and would request a variance to that. Also, I have spoken with the engineering department on item eight and just request that we work that out at final plat stage. What that's saying is just stating that we can't use the overflow flumes for access to the common area. There's certain things we can do there to offset the storm sewer inlets and put handicap ramps and make those accessible. The, you know, the rainwater just doesn't hit those very often. They're simply a overflow flume for the 100-year situation, and we just, so we would request that that just be allowed to work out at final plat stage. I want to go ahead and follow up with that, that we have received two letters on the project, and I would just like to address those comments. They, this, they're stating in these letters that we're exceeding, that we're putting 189 homes on this piece of property and that there's way too high a capacity. This was zoned in 1986 in a PUD that allowed for 50 acres of R1, 14 acres of R3, and 11 acres of C3. The C3 is not included in this plat, it's at the southeast corner there, but what we've done is gotten rid of all of the multifamily. The multifamily would actually allow for 24 units per acre at 14 acres. That's 300 units. We're only showing 189 units here. The average lot width on these, we've been, as my client has asked, is to be 70-foot minimum, so we're doing 70-foot minimum lots, which is above R1 standards. The, as far as the drainage issues go, I see the pictures, I don't know where they're taken at, but there's floodplain on the west line that we're showing in the common area, and I'm assuming that it's those houses that are, the houses that abut the floodplain. The only thing out of them is the house. We will, even though it's not required by the city to do detention, we don't have a problem taking care of the detention, so we will, we can do detention. We are actually doing, excuse me, some detention on Mustang Road because the structures under Mustang Road are, that were improved by ODOT are not adequately sized to handle improved conditions, so we are doing some detention there, which I don't think can really concern Thoroughbred, they're probably not concerned with that. We're actually decreasing the amount of water that would flow to the north onto them because only at the back halves of the north row of lots, the east-west, would actually flow onto them. The rest that would go into 55th Street and into the creek, which we would provide detention before it goes into the creek. They also stated that we would exceed the capacity of the neighborhood facilities. They're not tied into any sanitary sewer or water. They're five-acre lots. Nearest water is a mile away, and we're bringing it all the way to the property. So we're extending the water main along Mustang Road all the way to the property, and we will be extending public sewer into the property as well. Mustang is a growing community. They're in the Mustang School District. They just passed a $96 million school bond to allow for the growth in the Mustang area, so I don't believe we're going to exceed that there. If there's any questions regarding the traffic issues, I have Esther Shaw with Lee Engineering here that performed the traffic study on this property, which states that it was approved by the city, and it states that the traffic is fine there. I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any questions that may, we ask for approval.
Commissioners, any comments or questions? We do have people who are signed up to speak.
Part of, one of the TEs, I'll just state, one of the TEs is to rezone this to R1. They request that we rezone it to R1 with the final plat, which I don't have a problem with, so that'll take away the ability to put a duplex on any of these lots.
Okay. Sir? I said we have people signed up. Do you want to hear them first, or do you want, okay. Roger Reinhardt, please. Could you give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, please. It's Roger Reinhardt. I'm at 115 South Rock Island in El Reno. I'm an attorney representing the Thoroughbred Acres Homeowners Association. I appreciate your ability to listen to us today and the fact that we have seen that our letters of protest were submitted. Basically, our concerns are that the Thoroughbred Acres addition has been there for over 20 years. You have 16 lots on acreage-sized home sites that are serviced, as the gentleman indicated, by well water and by septic tank. Their concerns are that you're now turning the area south of them into an addition that's going to have roughly 189 homes plus commercial properties. They're really concerned about the flood control. They believe that Thoroughbred Acres is in a lower elevation and has, one of our protestors has an application to show you, a photo to show. A couple of the homes in Thoroughbred Acres are already having flooding issues with the creek approaching the back door of their house. I think some of those photos have been submitted to you. The volume and density of the homes proposed, I understand they say that it was far less than what was in the original plat or original pud. The fact is that you're talking about 189 homes. If even two of those, if even each one of those homes just has two cars, you're looking at 378 additional cars, more traffic, more sewer, more water, all the things that will burden the already stressed properties in that area. The proposed layout does not show water retention or detention. In fact, the, excuse me, the staff report suggests that the detention won't be required unless flooding occurs. Well, the flooding, if it occurs, will be on my client's property. We just don't think that's fair to take existing property owners, await till a disaster occurs before detention is required. I was excited to hear the applicant say he would agree to detention, so that's one of the requests we would make if the commission does approve it, that they would require I think it's important for the commission to remember the purposes of the planning and zoning sections of the Oklahoma City Code. Basically, chapter 59 says the purpose is to promote public health, safety, comfort, and convenience in general order and general welfare. We don't feel like the safety and convenience of the 16 existing property owners will be promoted by putting in this high-density development, which we believe will have an adverse effect upon them. Another purpose is to lessen the danger and congestion of public transportation and travel. Again, you're introducing a vastly higher number of traffic count than what was there before. We believe that'll have an issue. And finally, it's to prevent overcrowding of land with buildings. It kind of states its case. We think if the commission were to approve this, we would want that, we would request that there be a study to show the storm water detention or retention adequately met and that it won't have an adverse effect on the Thoroughbred Acres addition to the north. We think there also ought to be a groundwater saturation study because these people in Thoroughbred Acres are on septic tank and on well water, so if you change the area to the south into a sheet flow off of roofs, off of 189 driveways, off of streets, they feel that that will have an adverse effect on the groundwater situation there, and they're not served by public water, so there's a real concern. If they lose their wells, they won't, they lose the value of their properties. And finally, we would request that if you were to approve it, that you would add some type of a green belt or easement between Thoroughbred Acres and this housing addition in recognition of the fact that these are existing agricultural-type use homes. Many of these folks have horses or cattle that they run back there, and we think a green belt space separating that use from a high-intensity, high-density residential use would be appropriate. I think a couple of the other property owners would like to address the commission as well.
Any questions of Mr. Reinhardt, commissioners?
I have, I have one. When was Thoroughbred Acres developed?
The best we can tell, it was at least 20 years ago.
I have that answer.
Okay.
The owner's certificate and dedication of Thoroughbred Acres, it was a plat of survey, was filed in October 20th of 1989, which is three years after the PUD was filed and approved.
Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners? Okay, Dale McFarland. You'll have to pull the microphone around since it was moved on you.
Hi, I'm Dale McFarland. I live at one of those lots.
Could you pull the microphone toward you?
I'm sorry.
That's fine, thank you, and start again.
I'm Dale McFarland, and I live, I think it's Lot 12 on Thoroughbred Acres, and it would be right up against the, I'm very concerned with the well water. Are we going to get as much rain going down into the, with all the dry, the drought we've been having or the dry spells we've been having? And talking to different well diggers and, whatever they call, well diggers, that how dry it is and that the more concrete you put down, the less water, you know, will go down into the, for the well water. Because I'm, I've always had a well. I always look for, if I'm selling or buying, I'm always going to buy a place with a well if I can. And also, I'm very concerned about the flooding and also would really like the green belt idea or something between the rural properties and the urban properties, and I'm very concerned about all of these matters because everything I got is in the property I own, you know? I'm too old to start over. Thank you.
Thank you. Kerry Barger, have I said that correctly?
Yes. Thank you. I have the visual aids here, if you'll allow me.
Sure.
I'm Kerry Barger, owner of a five-acre tract there in Thoroughbred, and also the president of Thoroughbred Acres, and represent the homeowners there for quite some time. I've lived there just approximately 20 years, and I would like to give my perspective to this from living on the area there and give you a little bit of sense of what the property is actually like. As stated before, we do have horses. It's somewhat of a rural, urban mix. We like the cattle and the area that's been there for quite some time, and the thing I want to point out, even though the application here is for 189 homes, in 2006, I believe it says here, that just to the north of us, 442 homes were approved for R1. So what we're saying is, is the high density of homes that are now to be placed with the 189 and the 442 that's already approved, were 13 homes there, and the amount of traffic and burden on the type of lifestyle that we have is certainly going to be impacted much greater than if these were developed similar to Fawn Trails, which is just to the rest of us, that has acreages of one acre per home. We would like to see some sort of compatible construction or planning in that area, somewhat consistent to that type, rather than high-density homes just jam-packed in there as tight as they can get them. Now, the other thing that I want to bring into this about the flooding situation, two things, actually. One, no one has brought up the fact, it's been mentioned that the flooding does occur more to residents at the end of the neighborhood that are near the creek, and you've heard reference to the creek here recently. That creek is also an overflow from Mustang. Mustang has a large lake there nearby, and it overflows into that creek. And right now, just to give you a sense of what the property is like, we're probably 30% of sandstone. It runs water off there pretty fast, and so we have less water saturation, quicker runoff. Just the natural runoff from the acreages across our property isn't necessarily a one or two-day burden, but at the end of the creek, the two neighbors that are there often have seen water come up to their doorsteps, and that's just the way it is right now. You can imagine what it'd be like with added water from Mustang, overflow, the new addition that's going in there, and I've heard good planning, obviously, to control or retain water so that we don't have that, but we've, bring this site to you if you can see this here. It's only to show that Thoroughbred here and the proposed site just to the south of us has a natural water flow right in and across our properties. The creek lies at the back end. It also floods to the backside of the other neighbors that are on this north end of it. Now, I want to also bring your attention to Savannah Lakes, which is in Mustang, and perhaps, again, I'm overusing that development, but Mustang has a situation where they built the same number of homes in a like-proposed plat, and it is now flooding neighbors on the south, north side of them as well currently, and they were written up in the paper just a few months ago. Obviously, with the drought, nobody's talking about floods, but my complaint also has photos of flooding that did occur in 2007. So water, the amount of water through there right now with no changes is pretty fragile, and so we think, both because we're on wells and we don't know how we would get water services, either unless the developer wants to offer water to us and sewerage to help alleviate the problem with our wells, we're at like six, maybe six gallons per minute of water, so we're a very fragile amount to begin with. So adding this burden here with the 440-some homes that's already banking us to the north side, we feel like that this development would be better suited if it was larger acreages, somewhat compatible with the area that we're at. Also, traffic, it looks like that the traffic study was certainly looked at. We do have a high number of accidents because of turning in from Mustang Road, and I will point out an error there. It says that the speed limit is 45. It's actually 55, and that was changed just immediately after. It was 45 when the road was put in, changed to 55, and we've had car rollovers, rear-end collisions, trying to go from Mustang Road into our addition, and so it's quite a dangerous situation even now. So I don't know what you consider a traffic problem. Congestion is bad enough, but traffic problem is trying to get in and out of the additions on the Mustang Road, so I wanted to point that out, and offering any variance, obviously, this is not the final plat, but any variance to expand or get more houses in, we would be opposed to. So outside of that, I think I've given a pretty good surmise of what has already been said about it. said about a green belt. That's only to offer a little buffer between our livestock and an urban style. So any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark?
I would like to pass this around just to show you the houses. I believe that he's references having the flooding problems. This is an aerial image that indicates in red of the floodplain and then the pictures of the house of how close they are. The, yeah, my client bought this property knowing that it was zoned in a PUD and what he could do. And for the price he's paid for that property and for the amount of money, for the half a million dollars he has to pay to extend that water to this property, it's not feasible to go to large lots. He bought the property understanding he could develop it with high density. The, again, I would like to state that the PUD was approved in 1986. They couldn't have bought their lots before 1989, so had, had anybody looked at the zoning, they would have known that was already zoned high-density there to the south of them. The, on the traffic study issue, the traffic study does state that it's 55 north of 59th and 45 south of 59th, which it is. It enters Mustang, and in Mustang is 45. We agreed to do the detention before, before it goes into the creek. I mean, ultimately, the amount of time it takes for that entire drainage basin to get to their house is, we're going to be a lot shorter than that, but we'll ensure that we don't increase our runoff to that. So, and it's, R1 allows for 50-foot lots at 6,000 square feet. We're proposing 70-foot lots at an average of about 8,400 square feet because they're 74, they're 70s by 120s. The ones on the north abutting their property, I believe, are 70 by 135. That's a pretty good-sized lot that's, so we've got the larger lots abutting their property to the north. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Couple of things. On, on Mustang Road, you will extend water to the north property line. Is that correct?
On Mustang Road?
Yeah.
I'm not sure I understand you. On Mustang Road?
Along Mustang Road, will water be extended to your north property line?
It will be extended all the way to, on our final plat, which we are working on right now, we will include both entrances, 59th and to Mustang Road in our first phase. So water will actually all the way around our property, past that entrance on 59th.
So you'll loop it?
We'll go all the way to our west property line eventually.
And then your sewer line on the, on the north property line, where will your sewer line be on the north property line?
The sewer, there's actually sewer that runs along the creek. We will extend it east along the backs of those lots and around to the commercial and all through the addition.
So it would have access in case they had a failure of one of their?
If they ever had to hit the sewer, their easement would abut their property line for the lots to the south. I mean, you, they would have to work out some agreement to take it across their lots.
And pretty much have access to water if they had waterway problems?
If they ever had problems, they could extend their own water line along their private street.
Mark, you'd agree to TE 10, detention will be required?
Yeah, we'll do detention. I mean, in the first phase, we're not, I would just like to state, in the first phase, we're not completely detaining 100%, but that's not going to affect them. We're just doing that to actually, so that we can slow down flow enough to, so that the storm sewer can handle it underneath Mustang Road, but that has no effect on them. The, what the water they're concerned about is going to the west, and we'll meet detention ordinance on, on that. I would just kind of clarify that. TE to state, in phase one, for all the water that goes east, we won't, we will provide some detention, but not to meet the ordinance in 100%. And to the west, we will meet the drainage ordinance there as far as detention goes, which would be the water into their creek. And again, any water that does sheet flow to their property now over the raw land, we're cutting it off with the street that runs east-west and sending it to the creek. So we're going to be taking water off of them. I mean, only, you know, some of the lots, some of the back-half lots of the north road will be going onto them then. So we're taking water away from their backs of their properties there.
On TE 3, you're asking for a variance for block lengths. And when I look at this plat, it really looks like you've designed a very nice racetrack I could zip around there at a pretty good rate.
If I have to break that block up, I can. But, I mean, there's things that we can do there. It's, it's minimally over that 1,500 feet. You know, if I had to do something to break up that lot there, it's not going to, that block is not going to kill them.
I'm not quibbling with the 1,500 feet as much as I am in the overall design, where you just have a big loop going all the way around with a cut-through street in the middle. It just looks like it's promoting disaster. It, it really does. Now, as far as some of the points that were made before, this is a plat, guys. It's not zoning. It's already zoned R1. So the density is here. But I have some plat issues here, and it revolves around that, that variance and also just of the base design of the, the?
Well, and it's probably worth, worth pointing out that Thoroughbred Acres is sitting on R1 zoning.
Well, but the, and I know this is an old PUD. It's PUD 250 or 265. Been there since 89, someone pointed out. This is an example of why PUDs should have some type of a more corium cutoff date to, you know? And I've brought that up in the new plan discussions, but this is not something we'd do today, but it was done many years ago, and the, the zoning is in place. There's nothing we can do about the density. I think there are some things that you can improve the design on.
Okay, Commissioner Gales, I respect your comments. If it's, the only, I mean, the only place that we're not meeting code is on that block length, though. And I'll be, if, if you don't want to approve the TE for the block length, then?
Yeah. Mark, you're not, not getting my point. You, no, I'm not in favor of the variance, and the variance is a technical thing because it's 1,500 feet. But I'm not a cheerleader for your overall design, even if it wasn't, even if it met the 1,500 feet. The two big loops there that you have, the, the large loop and then the smaller loop, just, just don't look like a prudent design.
A comment on Commissioner Gales' comment. There's not a, anything we can do about a PUD 265 that's already zoned. That's the, I mean, that's the preliminary aspect of what I'm about to say is that it's there, and we wish it weren't. We wish it had a, you know, a half-life that expired, but it doesn't. We don't have that in place. But, but as far as the variance on the block, on the length of the block, totally agree with Commissioner Gales. You've got to do something better than this. Second comment, I mean, I won't vote for the variance on that, but the second comment is, was brought up by Mr. Reinhardt on the staff report. I just love this. Detention will not be required at this time. In the event of downstream flooding, detention will be required. It's a little, it's double speak. So what you just said, though, about the way this is plotted with the barrier of the street going north and south of the runoff into the creek, and then you're going to do detention at that end of the, of the project, I'd like to see what that is, and I think that'd be comfortable to the residents to the north, if you would have a clear explanation of what you intend to do at that phase. And we'd like to know, I'd like to know what that is now.
There's the 10 acres of common area on the west-hand side, right there. I have, we've, we've even be, we've even taken into consideration is actually making that a pond amenity. They could do detention there as well. But I have all, I have lots of room to do detention there, and we would just dump the storm sewer into a pond prior to it releasing into the creek or to the north. So it's a, it's a simple solution, and, and I, I think we're, you know, really going above and beyond by offering that up because we, we understand their concern. Even though it's not required, we'll do it.
But we'd like, I mean, the details of what it is you intend to do, I think that would be comfortable to the neighbors to the north. That's really what my point is. Back to the way you've, you know, drawn the plat itself, we're going to have to go back to a drawing board, I think, because I'm not sure what my fellow commissioners are going to do about the variance. I can't vote for a racetrack.
I'll, I'll remove the variance for TE, for TE 3, and we'll break the block length up. But as far as, I don't know how much more detail we need to provide as, that will provide detention prior to the creek there.
Okay. Can we do something, Susan, like detention? An approved detention plan will be required at the final plat stage? And that solves, that simplifies, rather than trying to write a bunch of language about east-west and so forth?
Well, the, the only thing is that there's a ridge line running through the middle of the property, and it kicks water to the east. And we just, we have a little bit of common area up at the front off of Mustang Road, and we, so we only have enough, we only have so much room to provide detention there as now. And so we will provide some detention, but I won't be able to 100% meet the drainage ordinance there, which doesn't affect their flooding issue. That goes across the creek and into the creek that's downstream of them. Their flooding issue is on the west half, which we will provide detention at final plat stage.
I'm not sure how to write that.
Speaking of common areas, one of the TEs indicates that detail should be provided with respect to amenities. Do you have anything you'd like to tell us about that?
I haven't discussed them at that stage, but we, that's something that is typically accustomed to on the final plat stage, to, to provide that information to them at final plat stage. At which, like I said, we've discussed doing, actually making those a ponds, walking trails back there on the west half of the property. I mean, it busts the park to the south in Mustang, so that's one of the reasons we've discussed doing that. We don't know the details of that yet, but, I mean, we're, it's going to be an upscale, an upscale residential neighborhood, I mean, just due to the lot sizes.
You also mentioned the variance on number eight, or some sort of a?
Well, I just, I just asked that that be worked out at final plat stage, which I've discussed with planning and engineering, and neither one of them had a problem with that.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm, I'm fine with removing the variance to TE 3.
Are sidewalks required?
Yes. Yes. Sidewalks, we'll actually do sidewalks along Mustang Road and Southwest 59th and all through the neighborhood and all along any common area that we abut.
How, how did you say you were going to handle those extremely long blocks? The extremely long blocks that's forming the racetrack effect? How did you say you was going to handle that, or when were you going to handle that?
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll just address the TE to, to staff's approval. I mean, because we're not going to ask, we're not going to ask for that. I don't know exactly. I may, I may do a cul-de-sac there in the back or break, break the lot a different way. I mean, there's several different options I have there. I would just like to?
Yeah, I just don't want to come back as a final plat and say, we're approving a final plat. We've already approved this.
No, no, we're not including the variance, so he'll have to redo it.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve this. I'm not sure what we do with the wording on the detention.
Maybe we say something like detention will be required on the west half of the site and?
West of the ridge line?
West of the ridge line. And to the extent possible, detention will be developed for the east side.
For the east, yeah. What you said.
Substantial engineering approval. Public Works approval.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Then we're going to, you're going to address the, the long block?
Yeah, we agree to, we will agree to TE.
A variance, so we're removing the, the variance. Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, just make sure when you, when you look at that block length, I know he's, we're not approving the variance.
Right.
But I don't want to see just a, just a bare minimum, something that still does not get rid of the whole loop.
You'll see it again at final plat stage, so that you'll, you'll have the option to, I mean, deny the final plat there. But I, I will take him, I'll take your comments into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Susan suggests that we need to have a motion to deny the variance before we go forward with the application.
And I'll move to deny the variance to TE 3.
Second, okay, we have a motion in second to deny the variance TE 3. Cast your votes. It's denied.
And then move to approve the application with the wording regarding the detention.
Okay, we have a motion in second to approve item 13 with TE 10 added. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item, item 14 is PC 10031, application by Cottonwood Development to rezone 10501 Northwest 23rd Street from Agricultural District to I-1 Single Family in Ward 1.
Lindsay Sow with Crafton Toll representing the applicant. We've read through the staff report and are in agreement with it. The staff supports the plan. There are no unfavorable considerations. It's in agreement with the comprehensive plan in the surrounding area. We believe R1 is appropriate zoning for this location and would ask for your approval.
We do have one protester signed up. Harry Holman? Hillman, Holman, I'm not sure how you wrote it. I'm sorry.
I'm Larry Holman, and I live at 11904 Well Coach Drive in Yukon, Oklahoma. And I don't know exactly, you know, what I should be protesting here, but there is a problem in the area with drainage. It's been going on for the past, you know, 30 to 40 years. And it concerns me that the water keeps running across my property. I used to be able to farm and get crops off of it. Basically, you can't do that now. Development seems to be occurring all around me, and I get notice of when it's right up against me. But basically, when developing is occurring, the, the way the water flows and drains, anybody that's involved downstream should actually be notified. And every time I get a chance, I, I bring this up. But basically, I was here two weeks ago, and I did talk to the civil engineer at Oklahoma City, and they was helpful, and I talked to Lindsay. But the concern is really bigger than this development. It's, when the, when the turnpike went in, I brought my issue up with them. They said that they, you know, wasn't affecting the drainage, that, and there was only concern to it as it rolled off their property, which then comes down on some of the property they're getting. There's a canal behind there. But in a, in a nutshell, with the turnpike being there, with Sun Valley Acres that was developed south of it years ago, back in the 60s, I think, because I grew up in the area right west of Overhuster, they had a little, you know, dirt creek back there. The city came in and opened it up, then I think flooding started occurring, occurring. They concreted it, and it comes up the back adjacent to my property, and it's not concreted. But that's really not a prob, you know? After talking to the city engineers and everything, they were saying that, you know, it's, it's private property with easements, and I might be responsible. Well, on, on the drainage on mine, I could probably handle it, but it's got nowhere to go because the ditch that runs around Overhuster on the south side can't carry all the water that's coming from west with the canal that they put under 10th Street, and it comes down that way, comes up, flows? way, comes up, flows in the backside of my property. When the development went on Sarah Road on the west side with the storage units, and I think there's even another addition over there, water's coming under the turnpike. Basically, I'm just getting water from all directions. And you've got a nice park out there. It's a nice area, and I just want, you know, people to pay attention on what they're doing before they make a decision, because there's a, there's a good opportunity to do something for the vision of the city out in that area, if everybody thinks about it, participates, and gets along. Because I'm willing to talk to people, and the city engineers was helpful, but there's a, it even goes back as far as Overhoster with the dam, the way they open it, because it's a large area that's affecting out here. I don't know, I was just reading the newspaper and staying up all night, you know, worrying about it. Well, I read that, you know, they're losing seers, but somebody's coming, and they give tax credits back, you know, to do that. And Devon has had tax relief, and they fix up downtown. You know, if you put that many homes in there, I don't know what you could do with the taxes, but if the area that the water's running off of, if that money some way could be controlled and put in a place where it's actually happening, I think everything could be solved for the better of everyone.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Hillman, commissioners? Thank you.
As far as drainage on our development, the drainage primarily goes to the east, and it enters the channel before exiting south of 23rd Street. During construction of our project, we will be making improvements along the north side of 23rd Street on that bar ditch to allow the drainage to convey and tie into the bar ditch that was constructed along the park.
Now, is this, is the park border this on the east?
Yes.
Okay. And we're not causing any problems to the park, I'm assuming?
Curtis or Jay?
Curtis. Is this impacting the park in any negative manner?
This is, Curtis Liggins with the Public Works Drainage. This is a preliminary plat, and we haven't looked at a study particularly, but in this area, detention is not required. I mean, the standard statement, they'd have to meet the requirements or the ordinance. When any development downstream would have went in, it would have had to meet the drainage requirement in that, for that particular amount of runoff that was coming through it as well. So even a park would have to meet the same drainage requirement.
This is straight R1 zoning, it's not in a PUD. Had it been in a PUD, we could have put in language similar to what we do to protect other parks, what we do around Martin Nature Park, that sort of thing. Since this is straight R1, it just falls back on the drainage ordinance. And that's, I guess, that's my question, that's what I asked you when you were here before, Lindsay. Why are you asking for R1? Why can't you put this in a PUD and put some teeth in it?
Because it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and in agreement with the surrounding areas. We're not asking for any variances, and we just feel that this straight R1 zoning is appropriate for this location.
Thank you. Kendall, do you wanna say something?
Sure, if you don't mind. In regards to that question, obviously, even in regards to the drainage, I don't think there's a difference in between R1 zoning and the PUD in the sense of it's still an engineering requirement that we are in agreement to work with, and...
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, when there has been some sensitivity in PUDs, there is a special set of language that the Parks Department has come up with that we insert in those PUDs to specifically protect the parks.
Sure.
And that's the question. I know, I understand, it's still gonna have to meet the drainage requirement.
Right, and in regards to this, obviously, you know, there's a lot of factors in regards to drainage, and that's the reason that what we wanna do is continue to meet the ordinance and to work with the staff and to do, you know, we have no intention of making a problem worse. But just even in regards to detention and some of those questions, just because you provide detention, you potentially can make it worse. You're looking at timing sequences, and if you release at the same time the peak's coming down, you potentially could make...
You're making a very strong case for that wording that we put in the Parks Department.
Well, I understand, but what I'm saying is, is what we wanna do is, you have an engineering department, we have ordinances, everything we do goes through the review process, and we simply, at the final plat stage, we come back with all the numbers, and we wanna work through the process like that. Also, in regards to this site and straight R1, you know, I think if you look at this site, you know, to the south is agricultural land, but it's all vacant. If you drop down a half a mile, you have 320 acres of straight R1 zoning. Obviously, the park to the east, which is R1 base zoning, obviously, but for the park. If you look to the northeast, it's a PUD that allows multifamily. Due north is another 120 acres of straight R1 zoning. Back to the east is 240 acres of R1. So I think when we look at the area in regards to how it's developed, to the south and to the east is a PUD that permits duplexes, but we feel like what we've got is a great plan, that it's, again, staff, there's no unfavorable considerations, it's in conformance with your plan, and it's obviously consistent with everything around it. So that's the reason, we understood last time the concern about the PUD, so we've considered it. Obviously, we've also got some time constraints, it's difficult to back up, but we think this is obviously a great application, a good development for the area, and we'd ask for your approval.
You have something else? You need to come to the microphone.
Well, I'm Larry Holman again. I understand what he's saying, but my concern is, for 30 years this has been going on, and I have not really seen a significant solving of the problem. What he was saying is, R1 to the north, and he said to the east, which is actually the lake, I think over there on the west, he meant on the other side that I was talking about. All this R1 is coming over on top of me, and, you know, everybody may meet the compliance and the city ordinance and everything, but in reality, the water comes down, and it's not functioning. So, the canal behind me, there's canal behind the lake that needs to be addressed, there's a lot of things that need to be addressed before it gets unsolvable.
Thank you.
Mr. Holman, I wonder if you could tell me, sort of in 25 words or less, what you would like us to do, or what you would like to see happen here?
Well, for the past 30 years, I would like to be able to farm, you know, and not put, you know, between $10,000 and $20,000 in a crop, and if the drought don't get it, then the rain, or the runoff will get it. I mean, that's good farmland down there, and it's, you know, I don't have a problem with reasonable water because it's in the area, but the development that's been occurring hasn't been adequately, well, okay, the, I guess, in simply terms, the, I don't know how the city can do it, but the drainage problem in the area, for some reason, you can do simple little task, getting policies and ordinance met, but if you look at the overall picture of all the development around, I'm basically in the lower part there on the west side of the lake, and it's running across me. When the, you know, you're talking about the parts, the canal that was put in there when the park did it, the canal, the park didn't put the canal in. The canal was put in about, in the 50s. It's the same canal that was there, and there's been nothing done to it, except cattails grow up in it, and sometimes they come in and mow it down. And the city has come in and cleaned it up a couple of times. So there's, somehow, there needs to be money from taxes or somewhere, whether it's relief or exemption, to take money from the development or from the other properties that's developing and funnel it, and solving the drainage problem around the area. It's not that difficult to do, it would probably be a paperwork nightmare, but simply, you know, I could make a few comments about, you know, the taxes that come from this, solves this drainage problem, and when you solve drainage problem over on Sun Valley Acres, which is south, and he said the development right south of us is R1, the development right south of us goes underwater. I don't know if that, is that zoned R1 right south of us? Well, then it's going to have problems, because when they put in a canal... Are you sure that's R1 between 10th and...
Sir, you need to address us, I'm sorry.
Well, anyway, right south of us, it goes underwater. There's cobwebs that's coming under 10th, so there's a, I'm just, you know, I'm not against them, there's just something that needs to be addressed before too many more problems develop and it gets more serious.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners? We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second? Any further discussion? Motion in second to approve item 15. Cast your votes. And it's approved. Pardon me? What? Oh, 14, I'm sorry. All right. My mistake. Item 14. Cast your votes. Yeah, Erwin, Erwin did not vote. Okay, item 15.
Jim Allen, Jim Allen is here.
Jim Allen. It's Erwin. Give me a minute. Okay. Item 15.
Item 15 is a preliminary plat of the same project.
Lindsay Sow with Crafton Toll representing the applicant. We've read through the staff report and are in agreement with all the TEs.
For approval? Okay, we have a motion in second to approve item 15. Cast your votes. And it's approved.
Item 16 has been continued until February the 14th. Item 17 is an application by John Moleman to rezone 2501 South I-35 Service Road from I-1 Single Family to SPUD 697 in Ward 7.
Good afternoon. My name is John Moleman, and I'm Culligan Water Conditioning, with my son Brian here. We just would like to rezone this property, because I think it was last year we bought another company that had five employees and their vehicles plus the service vehicles that come with it, with the company. And obviously, we've run out of space where we're at now, but we purchased this property that's in question there back in 1991, and we had two houses on it, rent houses, that were kept for all this time, and we decided that we wanted to get it rezoned, maybe. And last year, we sent out letters ourselves to all the people within 300 feet of that property, and we never, never had any objections, but we just didn't go on through with it at that time. After talking to people, they suggested that we take the two houses out, and that's what we did. And we're using that property right now as parking, which we'd like to get it rezoned so that we would be legally parked in there since we have our vehicles. And we do have a problem with vandalism, and we would like to build another building there to house our service vehicles at night so people couldn't get into them to be able to take things away from us. So, we would ask for your approval on this, if we could.
So the additional structure would be a storage building, is that correct?
Mostly just to park our vehicles in there. It could be some kind of little service area in there as well.
Okay. Well, my comment on this application was two. One was its proximity to the residential neighborhood, just to the north of you, you know, you're right in the middle of them. I mean, you know, that's where you are.
There's 24 streets right on the north side.
And the SPUD is, the summary that I have, I don't have the full SPUD application that you've submitted, but for example, on number eight, signs, it says not applicable. What does that mean?
Well, it means that we wouldn't put any signs on that property.
So it should be revised to say none?
I thought that's what it said.
It said, just, it's not applicable, but at, in other words, it should say no signs.
Well, we wouldn't put a sign, we could agree to that.
And then the second thing is, the new buildings will be regulated by the I-1 base regulations? I'm not sure what all that means, but since this is right next door to a residential neighborhood, I think I'd like to know what it is, if you're gonna build something, what materials you're gonna use, I mean, if you're gonna, you know, in other words, not just a metal building, just as cheap as it can be, because these people just, you know, these neighbors, they probably have an interest in seeing that something nicer is built there, because it's R1 now.
Right.
I mean, that's where it is. You're gonna park cars there, but you just said you may wanna do something else.
Later on, something.
I don't think that the SPUD architecture regulated by I-1 base is appropriate. I think that there should be another standard for any new building that's gonna be built on that corner.
Well, there was, excuse me, there was something there, about a 25-foot building and up to 12,000-foot, but we would never build that kind of a building, it's just for restoring mostly vehicles and stuff, and it would be in this area up there, excuse me, there's, we have three lots, four, three and two, and the road on 24th Street curves in to our property about there a little bit, so that really prohibits us a little bit as far as up on the north side. We would like to put the property, or the building on the, if we do build one, on the west side, so that we would have more visibility for parking. You can see what we got there right now on the screen, if you can see that, I guess you can. But the neighbor to the south, to the west of us is residential house, and he's pretty well willing to sell to us because he wants to move down to Lake Keystone, I think it is. He has some property down there, and so if so, we can make an arrangement with him to purchase his house, and we probably would either rent that out or take it out, whatever respect would be. But we wouldn't put any building up that wouldn't be very acceptable to the neighborhood that's already there now, that buildings like we have, that would match our building similarly.
I think that's what my, that's what I'm referring, you know, I'd like to know what it is that you plan on, but we've, on certain of the applications, there's 70% brick and part that, you know, stucco, et cetera, you know, I wouldn't wanna see a stark metal building just smack in the middle of this neighborhood.
Nick, you have a comment?
I'm a little troubled by, this is base I-1 zoning, which provides for screening of residential areas. He has setbacks set out in here. I'm not sure, we're not overkillin', Bob.
We have a, excuse me, we have a six-foot fence up there now, the metal fence blocking the whole area from anything, and we have no objections. We have two great big trees over there on the north side, and plan to put in some more, whatever the city requires. We would ask that you approve this, because we really need it.
Let me ask you this, I think what Commissioner Bright is asking is that, since you wanna build a structure, you wanna build a building, even though it's just housing your vehicles, the SPUD is not calling for the type of building materials. We know that basically, your building's a metal building, but what we're looking for, would you be opposed to some other building materials for the sides of the building that faces the highway and the street?
We could look at that, I mean, we've never, ever even thought that, we're just kinda in the beginning stage here, mainly asking for parking, but someday down the road, we know that we need...
So would you be, would you be, would you be okay with us putting the language in there that the new structure, any part of the new structure facing the street would be built out of brick or stucco or some other material other than just metal?
I think we can, I don't... I don't, I never had thought about it yet, you know, so.
And I guess that's what we're.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what you require, then, you know, it's reasonable that we can do that, well.
Because, because really, you have enough setback. You got 25 feet and you got all your screening, that's all in place. I think it's just the building materials. I think that's the issue since you want to build a building.
Well.
Just use some other materials that'd be more.
Whatever would be more appropriate that would look better, I guess, so.
Yeah. Because also, as an appearance quarter, it's I-35, the appearance quarter, we have some appearance quarter standards. And when your building was built, the metal building, we didn't have some of these things in place. But now we're trying to improve the appearance. But we don't want to overkill it, but if we.
Yeah, everything on the north side or the east side of I-35 is all commercial buildings. And these houses are here, but with what, Bricktown and everything going like it is right now, I would think someday down the road, probably not in my time, but that they would probably take those houses out to build more hotels. There is a hotel, a new Holiday Inn going up across the street right there on I-35 now. And so I don't think the building, the houses, it's just my opinion that they will be there too much longer.
Right. Well, can we add that TE? Would you be opposed to us adding a TE that talks more about the building materials?
No.
Brick or 70% brick or stucco?
Whatever the, we can come up with, yeah.
Let's just, can we add that TE and go forward?
Is that the desire of the Commissioner to do that?
Is there 70% brick on these other houses? I mean, are we being fair? Well, I mean, are these other houses siding?
Those houses are brick and everything else, some of the housing.
How old are those houses?
Well, I don't know. It was in the 50s or what. But my point is, that's on appearance quarter. And based on the appearance quarter, we've been coming up with some other standards as far as the structures.
Well, whatever you require, that's what we'll do.
Yeah. How about we say no unfinished metal structures? That's fine.
Well, I mean, we may have to make a metal frame, but then the house.
That's fine. The exterior, the exterior.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, I don't think that's a problem.
Yeah. Sir, are we okay with no unfinished metal structures?
No unfinished metal.
Finished. Are you going to be side-specific on that, facing the streets? I mean, I don't really care what it looks like facing the south or, I mean, what are we, are we talking about the whole building? I guess is what my question is.
Basically, it just means paint or coat the metal structure.
Yeah.
I'm trying to save him from doing brick and a whole bunch of others.
Yeah. Okay. I believe we approve the application based on the modifications that we made to the language as far as the thought.
And no signs.
And no signs.
A TE saying no signs.
Change the language to no sign for the TE.
All right, sir. The motion would include a TE.
There is one thing that we would like to ask for, too. The 25-foot setback is up there on 24th Street where the road curves quite a bit there, not a lot, but the 25-foot setback is really not, we would like to have 15 foot instead of 25 because it really eliminates a building from there. We'd like to put it, if we do put a building, it would be back on the west side where it would be out of the way and still give us all the room to get around.
Well, I think the intentions of the 25-foot setback was to keep it in line with the residence since you are encroaching into a residential area, that I think was keeping it in line with the other houses. I think that was the intent of that.
Well, it, you know, we would have to find another location to put our building, which would be kind of right in the middle of the parking lot. And that would, you know, we have big trucks that come in and they pull around and turn around. And it would just be a lot simpler if we could put it back over on that area. And 15 foot from that back part would put us quite a ways over because of the curve. I don't know.
Now, you're providing for a 15-foot setback on the west. It's just on the north at the 25.
Yeah, that's where we're asking for the 25 to be 15 instead of 25.
Is it because of the curve?
Yes.
So if you did it 25 feet from the part of the street that's straight, would that get you what you needed? Depending on where we measured the 25?
The curve is bothering us because our building would, it would take, we couldn't, if we had to say 25 foot to that curve, it would take into where our building would be.
I think if we could go 25 on lots two and three, and you see how the setback dips down inside of lot four. Keep it 25 on two and three and allow it to encroach, the corner of the building to encroach.
Yeah, if we could just on.
Is that all? Would I get you what you needed?
I don't have a problem with there in the 25 and the curve. You just said like that part is in the curve.
Where the curve is, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that.
With 15 foot there?
That's fine.
So we'll amend TE number one to have.
15 feet in the curve.
15 feet on lot four, lots two and three will remain at 25 feet.
Correct.
And that meets your concern.
Yeah, that'll work.
That is now the motion.
That's part of the motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 17 with the additional TEs as conditioned. Cast your votes. And you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Item 18 is PUD 1479. It's an application by Jared Guest to rezone 3151 Northeast 10th Street from R1 Single Family to PUD 1479 in Ward 7.
Hi, my name is Jared Guest, representing for a record service. And I'm here to ask for your approval of our rezoning plan for 3151 Northeast 10th Street. I have read the staff's recommendations and we will comply totally.
Commissioners, we have some people signed up. If you want to hear from them first.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Guest, if you'll step back for a minute, we'll call on Hattie Marsh. And if you would pull the microphone down, Ms. Marsh, and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Hattie Marsh. And I'm here to protest rezoning this R1 from Park to 13th Street. It's, he went to, on 10th Street, on the corner of Stanish and 10th Street, is a vacant lot. And they had, they said illegal dump, but I talked to the man that was doing the dumping, and he said that they was leaving it out as a landfill, that they recently was putting it there so that they land that lot and things would be even with the one that the record service is on now. But on Northeast 10th Street, we have a flooding problem since they've been that way for a while. And since they have built it up, when it really rains, it's really bad. That water draining from that high area down low to Stanish. And all of that is be filled with water. And it's hard to get out of Stanish up on 10th to 10th Street because of the traffic. And if they extended that service from where it is now all the way to Stanish, we're going to have a worse problem getting off of Stanish to get up on 10th Street. Okay, from Park to 13th Street is R1 district, that's single family district there. They want, on here, they got it there at the very top. They want to change it, R1 to the record service. Well, that's all families over there. And it's elderly people like me that lives over there. We can't afford to move from over there and buy another home because we're too old. And so we are protesting them from going from Park all the way to 13th Street and from Stanish to Redbud. We are protesting them from taking all that land and making it into a commercial district. That's what they seem like they want to do. And it wasn't an illegal dump, as they say, it's them trying to lever the property out. And that's what we are protesting them from taking the residential area and making it into a commercial.
Let me ask you a question or two. Along the south side of each East Park Place, there are no longer any houses there, is that correct?
On the south side, it's, they own part of it, they have it already fenced in.
And there are no houses there?
No, it's no houses on the one that they have. They want to take what they already got and put this Stanish here.
Right.
And they want to go from Stanish to where they stopped, their property lines stopped. They want to connect it together evidently. But then they want to go from Park to 10th Street. But all here, they got all residential areas here. That's all the homes that's over there. And I protest against them. When it rains, that water is going further and further off into the earth. They don't have water, so it'd be polluted. It's going to spread out. We did some searches on record service and service yards and stuff, and it does present a problem over a period of time. It pollutes the earth. And so we don't have a long time to keep it straight. So we need to take care of what God gave to us in the first place. So we are protesting them from taking Park to 13th Street and from Stanish to Redbud and turning it into a commercial district.
Al, I just want to make sure that you understand, they're not asking for anything north of East Park Place. They're only talking about their property. They're not, they're not trying to rezone anything between East Park Place and 13th Street.
Here, they got, it's, at the top here, they got requests for a change from R1.
Yes, but that affects only their property south of East Park Place.
If that's what the case, how come they didn't say so in the letter instead of taking it from R1?
Because part of, part of their property as it is zoned right now along the south side of East Park Place is zoned R1.
Well, then they.
And they want to use it for their business. So they're asking to rezone that, not anything else.
Why didn't they put it so in a letter stating that they, this is all that they wanted to rezone instead of showing all of this?
They're just showing, they're showing how it sits in the surrounding area, but the only area that they're talking about is what's outlined in the white line and what's outlined in the black line on your paper. They're not doing anything else.
Ma'am, if you look at your pant, there's a little dotted line in it.
Mm-hmm.
That's the only part very often that you saw.
That's the only one that they want to rezone?
Yes, ma'am.
And when they, when they send these notices out, they kind of show property all the way around it, but they're not going past, they're not going past Park Avenue. They're going from Park to 10th.
Okay.
They're not going north at all, but they just usually show the surrounding vicinity. So they show what's around it.
They're not trying to rezone your house?
I hope not.
They're not?
No, they're not.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming down.
Virginia Martin? Mr. Smith, you have something new to add to what we've already heard?
No, I don't. Actually, I just want to get a clear understanding of what it was trying to rezone, and you guys made it very clear for me, so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you for coming down today. We'll just see if any Commissioners have any additional questions of you, Commissioners?
I have a couple of things that I'm concerned about. One, just from what just took place then, you guys requesting this, and I think you should have met with those homeowners to be a good neighbor and kind of explained exactly what you were doing. And then plus, I would like to ask you to continue with this item because Councilman Kelly and myself would like to get with you and visit with you on exactly what you want to do. We already have some situations that are spelled out in this report. You shouldn't be parking outside the fence and you always, and it's continually parked outside on 10th Street.
May I address that, sir? It says they believe that they parked in violation of the PUD. Would have to research that to make sure, but no storage vehicles are outside the fence. And that PUD only applies to storage vehicles.
I'm just saying, I live, I live in that area and I've seen cars parked. I don't know if they store it or what.
Okay.
But I'd like to visit with you, Councilman Kelly and myself would like to visit with you.
Love to.
Would you like to visit with the homeowners so they'll really understand what you're doing?
That sounds excellent.
So if you would, I'd like to continue this until, for a couple of weeks.
February 14th is our next meeting.
February 14th will be.
Valentine's Day for you, James.
That's good.
I have a heart there. Is that a motion? Is that a motion?
Is that okay with you, sir?
Is that okay with you, 14th?
15th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item 18 until.
When would you like to get together, sir?
14th.
It's 14th on this, but need to get in contact with you. Can you leave your contact information with the, with the staff and we'll make contact with you.
Okay. Cast your votes and it is continued to February 14th. Thank you for that. We need to vote on the minutes of the January 10th meeting now that Nick is here and five of you who attended the meeting are present. Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, Nick and James, we need to approve the January 10th minutes and you were the fifth person who was here, so we need a second and a vote?
I'll shut your vote.
Good. That's what I was asking for. Cast your votes and the minutes are approved. Okay, Russell, go ahead. That concludes the items for individual consideration today.
You want to go through?
Yeah, Planning Commission Committee, Michael isn't here and he's the only committee that we have. Planning Commission members, anybody? Planning Department?
It seems like it'll be a full agenda on February the 14th, so.
So show up?
Everybody should show up for, well, we do have, we do have a study session.
What is it about?
Well, we've got a UDC which we're proposing for the second meeting on the PUD ordinance amendments. Staff met with several of the home builders yesterday and they were fine with everything. Well, it really is minor. I maybe got a little blown out of the water again. And then we're proposing a study session because we're looking at making some modifications to the traffic impact assessment requirements, the thresholds, and basically actually making those a little more lenient. So, well, they, you know, after review, a little further review, that's what staff believes is warranted. So that's the intent. It will be, it does appear at this point as it will be a long planning commission session.
So for those of you who are married or dating, no plan on an early dinner?
Yeah.
Might be a good idea for the city to think about water issues going forward, extending water. I mean, we're not immune to droughts in this community or in this part of the country. And since we've. And since we're involved in fascinating things like litigation, regarding trying to obtain water going forward for the next 50 years, the idea of extending water, I would suggest that policymakers think about the wisdom of that, how far out we can go. We're stretching water out to, you know, somebody's going to spend $500,000, take more water out to Mustang. And people are talking about wells that spit out a little bit, you know, like five or six gallons of water a minute. Water is an issue that I think needs a real hard look.
It is, it's one of the critical elements of the plan. So we're working with the utilities department on that issue, and I know that they've got longer-term plans as well. Certainly been in a discussion for the council last couple of meetings.
I think they ought to take a hard look at Plans A and B and whether that's an appropriate thing for the water or public or water utilities, whatever that Marcia Slaughter's department is called, whether that's the appropriate place for those decisions to be made. Or maybe Planning Commissioner City Council is a much more appropriate venue as a policy Just a thought. Anything else? Municipal Counselor's Office? Gee, you guys never have anything. What about Skip Kelly's deal here? Not going to tell us about it? Development Services? Any other business? Motion to adjourn? I never thought this meeting would be so long today.